I want to welcome each one of you to the Halifax County Board of Commissioners meeting on this Monday, February 17th at 5:30. Thank all of you all for being here. Meeting will officially come to order at this time. We have a very lengthy agenda tonight, but we're going to try to move through it pretty swiftly, as swiftly as possible. We're going to be led in invocation by Commissioner Thomas Byrne, after which we're going to do the pledge of allegiance in unison. Those of you who wish to join us, please stand.
Hello, Pastor. Father, Father, we just thank you so much for this opportunity for us to come together and fellowship, Lord, in a way, and we ask you, Lord, to reach for wisdom and do the county's business as you see fit, and we also ask you, Lord, to reach out your hand and touch those in our community that are sick and hurting. We're also asking you to touch those that are just struggling with things in their life, where we know you can provide them with comfort and mercy at this time. And we just, once again, ask you to be with us as the weather may be changing here soon. Keep everybody safe, keep all the workers that's got to be out there safe, Lord. We ask all of these things, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, we'll turn our attention toward the adoption of the agenda. I trust that my colleagues have had an opportunity to review the agenda. I would so entertain the motion for the adoption.
Motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Webb, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Redden. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. I forgot this, and I apologize. For the record, Vice Chair Shemua Davis will not be with us tonight. She had a prior commitment, so, for the record, Madam Clerk, she will not be with us. Okay, conflict of interest. In accordance with the Halifax County Board of Commissioners' Rules of Procedure in an offline general statute, section 153A-44, it is the duty of every member present to run all matters coming before the Board unless there is a conflict of interest as determined by the Board by law. Does any Board member have a non-conflict of interest with respect to matters coming before us tonight? Commissioner Silver.
No, sir, no, no.
No conflict. No conflict?
No.
No conflict.
Madam Clerk, let recede so reflect that five Commissioners present do not have conflict with any matters coming before us tonight.
Yes, sir.
At this time, we're going to special recognitions, item A, proclaiming and honoring Black History Month 2025. We'll hear from Dr. Stephanie Crater, who is Chair of the Halifax County Hearing Relations Committee. Dr. Crater, thank you for being here.
Thank you so much, Judge. Thank you, Commissioner, for your support for the HRC. The first proclamation honoring Black History Month, whereas Black History Month is a time to honor and reflect upon the enduring contributions and accomplishments of African Americans, recognizing their central role in the shaping of our nation's history, culture, and progress, and whereas the 2025 national theme, African Americans and Labor, highlights the profound and transformative impact of African American labor in all its forms, through the United States, still the most, vocational and voluntary, throughout history, across the United States, Africa, and the diaspora, and whereas from the forced labor of enslaved Africans that sustained economies during colonial times, to the sharecroppers and landowners who navigated the Reconstruction Era, to the wage earners and entrepreneurs who shaped the industrial age, African Americans have played an integral role in building this nation, and whereas African Americans have been pivotal in crafting not only the physical infrastructure of our country, including iconic architecture and landmarks, but also the social and cultural institutions that sustain and inspire communities such as churches, social justice organizations, labor unions, and educational institutions, and whereas this year marks the centennial of the Brotherhood of Sleeping Carports and Maids, the first black labor union to receive a charter from the American Federation of Labor, founded by labor organizer and civil rights activist, Abe Philip Randolph, who fought tirelessly for economic justice and equal rights for workers, and whereas African American labor activism has included the voices of powerful leaders like Eddie Wyatt, who championed work on rights, job security, wage equity, and reproductive rights, as well as countless others who laboring, organized, and advocated for better working conditions, equal opportunities, and the rights of dignity in all forms of work, and whereas African American labor contributions have extended beyond traditional industries, influencing the arts, finances, education, sports, and civil service, with the legacy of their work continuing to inspire and inform the ongoing struggle for racial, economic, and social justice, and whereas reflecting what African Americans' labor and labor struggles deepens our understanding of the Black experience across time and space, allowing us to confront past injustices while building a future where equity, opportunity, and fairness prevail for all. Now therefore be it resolved that the Halifax County Commissioners hereby recognize and celebrate February 2025 as Black History Month, honoring the contributions, sacrifices, and achievements of African Americans in labor and beyond, and encouraging all residents to reflect on their enduring legacy and commit to advancing the principles of justice, equity, and opportunity. Brennan J. Bryant, Chairman, Halifax County Board of Commissioners, Andrew H. Wiggins, Clerk to the Board, Halifax County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Dr. Crater. Commissioners, you've heard the information coming before us from the Chair of the Hearing Relations Committee. What is your pleasure?
Move for adoption.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Webb, second by Commissioner Silver. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Dr. Crater, thank you so much, and appreciate all that you and the committee do for Halifax County.
Thank you all.
All right, next item on the agenda. We're going to have a public hearing involving a matter with Ms. Captain Scott, Stella Jones Waterline Replacement Project Additional Appropriation, but just before I open it for the public hearing portion of that, we're going to hear from Ms. Scott. And this is dealing with the Stella Jones Waterline Replacement Project Additional Appropriation. Ms. Scott.
I'm here to be holding a public hearing to consider an additional appropriation to the Stella Jones Waterline Replacement Project. You'll recall, last year, 2024, the Department of Commerce granted a utility fund account grant in the amount of $125,185 to support the replacement of a municipal water line under new rail spur to be constructed by Stella Jones Corporation, if this is not a mislead. After receiving informal bids, it was determined that the project costs were going to be greater than the funds available for the project. We've also already adopted a project budget ordinance for this project, and so Stella Jones Corporation has agreed to provide additional funds in an amount not to exceed $65,125 for the project cost. So we are required to conduct a public hearing to accept or create, required to accepting and providing additional funds, because that's the purpose for tonight's public hearing.
Okay, Commissioners, you've heard information coming from Ms. Scott. Just before I open, ask for a motion to open the public hearing, I got a statement that I need to read for the public. This is the open statement regarding public hearings. Public hearings are held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regardless of specific subject. Those persons who desire to speak will give their name, their physical address, their phone number, and name of organization they are speaking for, if applicable. We request that each speaker limit their comments solely to the issue at hand and not direct comments towards specific individuals. In the interest of time, please do not repeat facts or issues covered by previous speakers. If you wish to comment, you should express your opinion on the subject matter and give the Board your understanding of whether you favor or oppose the issue being discussed. The Halifax County Board of Commissioners values and appreciates opportunity to listen to the citizens of this county and respect requests that both guidelines be followed. With that being read, Commissioners, I would ask for a motion to open the public hearing for the purpose of the Stella Jones Waterline Replacement Project Additional Appropriations. Motion made by Commissioner Byrdsdale, second. Second by Commissioner Redden. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, at this time, I would ask that anyone who wants to speak in reference to that, come to the podium and follow my instructions, please. Okay, Commissioners, seeing no one is coming to the podium, what is your pleasure?
Seeing no one is coming to the public hearing, move that, the hearing be closed.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Webb, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Silver. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. All right, now, item three on the agenda deals with action of public hearing. Ms. Scott?
Yes.
You got two items, item A and item B?
Yes.
Okay, we want to hear from you on item A, and then we'll hear from item B.
Now that you've conducted the public hearing, I ask that you consider adoption of the resolution that you have in your package, which authorizes acceptance, appropriation, and expenditure of additional funds and other matters on behalf of the Stella Jones Waterline Replacement Project. And again, the total project cost will be $188,755. Stella Jones agrees with up to $65,000, sorry, $121 in additional funds, and in fact, I have that check delivered to our finance director tonight.
Okay.
On behalf of the project.
So, Ms. Scott, that 1-9 doesn't really mean anything, supposed to be 1-8 or something?
1-9 is if you add the 65 to the amount that was already approved, but the total project cost is 188,755.
Okay.
Which will be in the next item, the project budget ordinance, that's what you will adopt.
Okay. Commissioners, you've heard the information come from Ms. Scott. What is your pleasure in regards to the Board adopting the attached resolution?
Move for adoption.
Motion made by Commissioner Webb, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Redden. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Ms. Scott, we're back on you, item B, which is the amended grant project ordinance for Stella Jones Waterline Replacement Project.
Yes, the final items associated with this project is the consideration of amended grant project ordinance for this project, and so the project ordinance has been modified to increase the total project cost to $188,755, and that includes the additional funds from Stella Jones to cover the shortfall over the original grant amount of $125,185.
Okay, Attorney Rollins.
Kathy, I'm looking at the grant project ordinance that's in the agenda packet. There may be a typo under the revenues coming from Stella Jones. It says $63,570, and I think we said that the revenue from Stella Jones would be not to exceed $65,121.
Right, that was the amount that we originally had been advised for Stella Jones for the gap, but once we did a review of the project, we were able to realize some savings in the engineering side, and so the amount of the total project cost is $188,755, and the amount from Stella Jones required is $63,570. Do you recall that, Ms. Jones? After everything was done, Kathy reviewed the budget and found a cost saving in the engineering, so that reduced the cost of the company.
Okay.
So they approved up to $65,121 to fund the any gaps in the project, but we only needed the $63,570.
Okay, with that being said, any other questions or comments? I also entertain a motion for the attached project ordinance, Stella Jones. Their motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second? Okay, second, motion made by Commissioner Bryan, second by Commissioner Silver. Any further discussion?
Can I add one more?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
So, just so I'm clear, these prices, what we have here, that's actually under, I mean, that's contract, right?
Well, this is what we received is for, and we have the contract documents ready to sign once you approve everything.
Okay, so, okay, so I just want to make sure that we've got, we're not going to come back and 25,000 more dollars.
We have a bid that the contractor has provided, so we'll go with that.
Okay. Any further questions? If not, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Scott, appreciate you. All right, next item we, on the agenda, is the legislative hearing that we're getting ready to have. And the legislative hearing, and this is not the General Assembly, but this is what the title of it is, legislative hearing, just to make that real clear. And also, just before I call Mr. Roundtree up to hear from him about the proposal, these are some ground rules, and I want you to listen and comply. Each speaker will have five minutes when they come to speak. You cannot yield your time to another person. Example, if you speak three minutes and you got two minutes, you can't yield it to anyone else. And then also follow the public hearing statement that I read before you, and I ask you to do that, please. Okay, at this time, before we, before I read that statement and before we open it up, I'm going to ask our Planning Director, Chris Roundtree, to come up. Good afternoon, sir, good evening.
Good evening, Chair. Good evening, Mr. Chair, world members. Tonight, as mentioned, we do have some proposed amendments to our Halifax County Solar Energy System Ordinance from your review and afterwards hold legislative here for that. If you recall, last year in October, your Board directed staff to develop some amendments to the existing Halifax County Solar Energy System Ordinance, which was originally adopted in 2019. That would be advisable to facilitate construction, installation, and operation of solar energy systems in a manner to produce economic development and ensure the protection of health, safety, and welfare while also avoiding impacts to agricultural lands, endangered species, conservation lands, and other sensitive lands with regards to setbacks, buffers, insured decommission of the system sites. County staff, they're further directed to present the proposed ordinance amendments to the Halifax County Plan Board for review and comment. Pursuant to General Statute 160D 604 and Section 229A of the County Code of Ordinances, the Plan Board gave me on January 15th of this year to review the amendments proposed by county staff, receive public comments on proposed amendments, and make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners regarding the proposed amendments. A copy of the ordinance is attached with the proposed amendments as recommended by staff, which redlined the ordinance that's in your packet, and this is also what was presented to the Plan Board at the January meeting. After receiving the public comment and deliberations on the proposed amendments, Halifax County Plan Board recommended that Board Commissioners should not adopt the proposed amendment designed or designated as Section 46-50C, which would prohibit the location of any Level 2 or 3 solar energy systems closer than a mile from an existing Level 2 or 3 solar energy system. The Plan Board made no recognition to either for or against the remaining proposed amendments. And there's a copy of the Plan Board's recommendation from the Chairman attached to your packet. We have provided two versions of an adopted ordinance for your consideration. One version may be used for adoption of all amendments proposed by staff, and the other may be used to decide if to accept the recognition of Plan Board with regards to deleting that Section 46-50C. If you have other proposed amendments after hearing comments that you wish to adopt, we would, we are prepared to note those changes during deliberations. And finally, also included are copies of policies of Halifax County Cooperative Development Plan, considered to be consistent with proposed amendments for the solar ordinance. You will note that they are referenced in both versions of the adopted ordinance in your packet. Attorney Rollins, if you have any further to some of the changes and additional information that is in.
Thank you, Chris. Board, if you will go, and there may be a bit of confusion here because it appears to me that the packet of materials pertinent to the legislative hearing are under Agenda Item 5, which says action on legislative hearing. I'm not sure how that happened, but if you'll go to the attachments in Item 5, those will be the things I'll be talking about prior to this legislative hearing. What I'm looking at now is the redlined ordinance that shows the changes that were presented to the Planning Board, and I'm glad Commissioner Webb is here because he was at that meeting as well, and can help if I flub something here. But I'm looking at those proposed changes, redlines, and I want to go through those with you briefly before you start this legislative hearing. The first change is right at the very beginning, which simply states that the amendment is that this article is adopted pursuant to 153A, Article 18, as amended by Chapter 160D, that is the new planning and zoning ordinance in the general statutes. And also, as, and by such other statutory authorities may be cited herein, that reference is there because we have a reference later in this proposed amendment that refers to public nuisances, and we want to be sure we've tied that in as authority under this particular ordinance. Continuing on to page three, there are, under Section 46-49, we're proposing to change the name of a conditional use permit to special use permit. You're going to see that throughout these amendments. Conditional use permit is no longer the term of art that's used in zoning, that all refer to as special use permits now, so that change has been adopted throughout the proposed amendments as we go through. Moving on, you will see following on page four, a table of permit requirements. The simple change there is everything that refers to CUP, which meant conditional use permit, now refers to SUP for special use permit. Also, this is not a controversial change, but just something to align with the current legislation and statutes. Now moving to page five, that begins with Section 46-50, we're proposing to change the heading of that section to read parcel line setbacks and other structure location requirements. The first proposed change is under subsection B1, that would be changed to read as follows: A setback of 150-foot setback from the front property line or road right-of-way and a 50-foot setback from the side and rear property lines. However, all electrical substations slash components and battery backup applications shall be located at least 200 feet from any property line, residence, church, school, business, or other similar structures. Subsection B2 would be changed from 75 to a 200-foot setback from adjacent residences, churches, schools, businesses, or similar structures. Finally, under Section 46-50, there's a proposed change, and frankly, this is the one that the Plan Board recommended that you not adopt, but I'll point it out now. Proposed change was subsection C. The solar array of a proposed Level 2 or 3 SES facility should not be located nearer than one mile from the solar array of another Level 2 or 3 SES facility that is already under development or in operation. Again, I would just point out that that is the only recommendation that the Plan Board made as to something not, for you not to adopt. You'll note, and you know that you're not bound by that, but I wanted to point out that that was our recommendation, that it not be adopted. Moving on to Section 46-53, other system requirements, we strike with respect to screening and buffering, we strike subsection A2 about a single row of evergreens in combination with mature vegetation, and simply leave it as, it puts a spectacle, leaves Chris in helping with this, but I think that basically leaves us at a situation where you're either going to have a buffer of mature vegetation, or you're going to have a buffer that involves a double row of offset evergreens or a berm combined with evergreens, as opposed to a single row of evergreens. Continuing on to subsection E about decommissioning, there are several changes that we had before the Plan Board concerning our local decommissioning rules, and those of you who were on the Board maybe at the time, and that may not be anyone but Chairman, when we adopted this ordinance originally, there were no state rules respecting decommissioning of solar energy systems. That has changed since then, we'll discuss that more in just a moment, but these are our local decommissioning rules. The first change is to change the reference to conditional use permit to special use permit. The second recommended change is in subsection E1D, which, and you'll see it noted there in redline, the estimated market value of scrap or recyclable materials shall not be considered in calculating the decommissioning cost. Next proposed change was in subsection D3, that no bond would be approved without written evidence of authorization from the North Carolina Commission of Insurance for the surety on the bond to issue performance bonds into the state. That's really frankly something you can get from the Commission of Insurance, if we have someone who's underwriting the bond, we want to know they're authorized to do business in North Carolina, and I think that's a do business in North Carolina, and I think that's an honest thing to require if you're taking a performance bond in any situation. And then we added language to make it clear that approval of a bond or a letter of credit would be in the sole discretion of the Planning Director. Again, there are two more changes with respect to conditional use permit being special use The next change is under subparagraf F about abandonment of an SES. The change we made there was to add a sentence at the end of that paragraph that says pursuant to GS 153a 121a, "An abandoned Level 2 or 3 SES regardless of its physical condition is hereby declared to be a public nuisance subject to abatement by any lawful means." This is as a final safety net for any situation where we might have an SES that's abandoned, we can't find who's responsible for it, and for whatever reason, the bond fails, and there's nothing else to be done except fall back on declaring it to be a public nuisance and taking care of the situation under those particular statutes about public nuisance abatement. Not ideal, but better than nothing. And then the last proposed change is subparagraph G that would require the responsible party for decommissioning to provide written notice to the Planning Director regarding any change in the name, corporate identity, address, or other contact information for the owner or operator of the Level 2 or 3 SES, and failure to provide that notice would be grounds for revocation of the special use permit or the zoning permit that was issued for the SES. Those are the changes that were proposed to the Planning Board. And I'm going to throw a curve at you because I think it's a good curve, but Chris and I and county management have some conversations since the meeting of the Planning Board, and I have, to preface that, I want to tell you that I have placed at your seats another redlined version of the ordinance, and you'll see a banner at the top of the page that says, "This version rescinds local decommissioning rules in favor of state statutes and regulations." Does everyone have that? Okay. If I can bring your attention to that, then I've highlighted in that document in yellow some proposals we have for you to consider before this hearing begins, and this is just among the number of things you might do after the legislative hearing is over. You may make all kinds of changes and not accept anything we're recommending, but we wanted you to have this to consider as well. On page two of that document, I've just handed you the paper document under Section 46-47 on applicability. We have proposed amendments to that to say that, I'll read it in full so the public can hear it. "This article applies to the construction of any new SES within the planning jurisdiction of Halifax County, except that subsections 46-53e and F shall apply to all SESs within the planning jurisdiction of the county regardless of date of construction and/or commencement of operation." In a few moments, I'll come to those subsections, and you'll see why we're proposing that those changes apply to any solar energy system in the county regardless of when it started up, but give me just a few moments for that. The next change, and we've been over these other redlines before, but the next change highlighted in yellow is on page six. This is the fairly substantial change. Under subsection E of Section 36-53, subsection E entitled "Decommissioning," we are proposing to delete all of the local rules about decommissioning and substituting instead this language. "The owner或operator of an SES shall comply with all applicable requirements of Chapter 138, Article 9, Part 2J of the North Carolina General Statutes entitled 'Management of Solar Energy Equipment,' and all rules under Title 15a, Chapter 01, Subchapter 01v entitled 'Decommissioning and Financial Assurance Requirements for Utility-Scale Solar Projects, as the same may be amended from time to time.'" In other words, we're proposing you consider that we rescind all of our local decommissioning rules and that we instead adopt the requirement that any SES in the county comply with the new state statutes and administrative code rules. Continuing with that same thought in mind, if you were to do that, that would be subsection 1 require compliance with the state rules and regulations. Subsection 2 at the bottom of page seven would remain. "SES components will not be received or handled at any solid waste disposal or recycling facility owned, operated, or under contract with Halifax County." That was already in your ordinance. We propose that we keep that even though decommissioning would be governed by, might be governed if you adopt this, would be governed by state and statute and regulation. And the next change proposed would be with respect to subsection F about abandonment, and we're proposing that the first sentence remain as it is. I'll read for the public. "A Level 2 or 3 SES that ceases to produce energy on a continuous basis for 12 months will be considered abandoned unless the SES owner provides substantial evidence updated every six months after 12 months of no energy production to the Planning Director of the intent to maintain and reinstate the operation of the facility." The remaining portion of that as it previously existed would be deleted because it concerns things that have to do with arc decommissioning, local decommission rules, which we are proposing to rescind. And then there's a final sentence of that subsection F pursuant to GS 153a 121a, "An abandoned or Level 2 or 3 SES regardless of physical condition is declared to be a public nuisance subject to abatement by any lawful means." We're proposing that language remain because we still feel like even though we are proposing to have the state manage decommissioning and financial assurances and registration and that kind of thing, as a backstop, we still want to propose that an abandoned SES be declared a public nuisance so that we have some means of dealing with it if we were to have to do that. Finally, the proposed change to subsection G because we are proposing to forego local decommissioning rules would read as follows. "The owner或operator of a Level 2 or 3 SES shall provide written notice to the Planning Director regarding any change in the name, corporate identity, address, or other contact information for the owner or operator. Such notice shall be given within 60 days of any such change. Failure to abide by this requirement will constitute grounds for revocation of special use permit or zoning permit issued for the SES." To be clear, that last part about keeping the Planning Director advised of the identity and the contact information for an SES operator or owner would only apply to new facilities. It would not apply to those that already have their permit. We can't subject their permit to revocation after the fact. However, the previous requirements about decommissioning and complying with state law and the previous change about abandonment being a public nuisance applies to any SES whether it's already in existence and operating or any new SES. Now, I appreciate the Board's attention and patience with that. We just believe that, we've gone through the state statute, we've gone through the regulations and the state statute. They're very detailed, and frankly, staff believes that it's probably not necessary that we duplicate that effort, that we actually let the state deal with decommissioning, and we mind, you know, our own business here with other things such as setbacks, other zone requirements, and rather than duplicating the effort of the state with respect to that. So any questions about the additional proposed changes you might want to consider. You don't have to accept what we're proposing about decommissioning, but we wanted you to be aware that that's an option, and we're prepared to go forward with that if you want to decide to go that route. Having said all that, I said all that so the public can be aware of what staff is proposing as we take public comment during this legislative hearing, and if you have questions now, Board, I'll be glad to take them, but I'll also be glad to take them when you come to that part of the agenda where you actually decide what you're going to do.
Okay. You've heard information coming from our attorney and also our Planning Director. Mr. Roundtree, have anything you want to add?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, I'm going to go ahead and read the opening statement in regards to the public hearing for this legislative hearing, then I'm going to ask for a motion of second to open it, okay? All right. And remember the ground rules, five minutes, and you can't give your time to anyone, even if you use less than the five minutes, and be sure that you comply with my instructions that I'm getting ready to give you now. Open the statement, public hearing. Public hearings are held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding a specific subject. Those persons designed to speak will give their name, their physical address, their phone number, and the name of the organization that they are speaking for if applicable. We request that each speaker limit their comments solely to the issue at hand and not direct comments towards specific individuals. In the interest of time, please do not repeat facts or issues covered by previous speakers. If you wish to comment, you should express your opinion on the subject matter and give the Board an understanding of whether you favor or you oppose the items being discussed. The Halifax County Board of Commissioners values and appreciates the opportunity to listen to the citizens of Halifax County and respect requests that above guidelines be followed. Okay. And also, just for the record, Ms., our county manager, Ms. Denton, is going to keep up with the five minutes, so when you hear the phone go off, it's time to stop. All right. At this time, Commissioners, I would ask for a motion of second over this public hearing. Motion made by Commissioner Burges, our second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Silver in the further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Okay. All right. At this time, I'm going to ask the first speaker, you may come up, and when you start speaking, that's when your five minutes starts. Identify, make sure you identify yourself, name, address, organization that you're with, and start talking.
Thank you, Chairman Bryant. Boy, I'm Eddie Braxton. I live at 1609 Foxville Drive in Scotland Lake, North Carolina. It's the only land I own. I don't own any farm land, but we're land, but I do have a concern with solar fields in Halifax County. We are a agricultural community on the south end of the county. When our farmers do well, our community does well. I've heard Mr. Roundtree talk about setbacks. With setback, larger setbacks, that just means solar company is going to need more land to put the solar fields. They won't, but it's going to consume more land, and they don't make any more farm land. And agriculture to this community is just so important. I would love to see our county stand up and have a moratorium against no more solar fields. It's my understanding that maybe Edgecombe, Halifax, North Hampton County because of the quality of our flat land and our fields is ideal situations to bring solar companies to these counties. And I just, if you hadn't had the opportunity to ride through the area and see the work that's going on with this current solar field that's going on on old 125 Sandbit Road, take that afternoon and go look and just see, and even with buffers, that's just hiding what's back there. And, you know, if you got some drug houses and you put up the fence around it, a six-foot, 10-foot fence, solid wood fence, you've still got a problem behind the fence. But I know my community, when the farmers do well, our community does well. And I'd just love to see our county step up and just say we won't have any more solar fields in Halifax County. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Braxton. Next person.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Commissioner Ken Ward from the wonderful town of Enfield. And speaking on behalf of the town of Enfield, also my family, we've owned a family farm since the 1800s. And adjacent to our farm is my cousin, Robert Bell, who owns Bell's Farm, which has also been run since the 1800s. And the one-mile solar dead zone may sound like a small change, but it would have serious consequences for our town in Enfield and for the future. I think you've heard from your attorney, and I agree with almost everything that he said. It hurts Enfield's revitalization plan. Right now, Enfield is working on a revitalization plan that will bring new economic opportunities to our town. This plan includes solar engine projects and battery storage that will lower electric bills, which is a huge issue for the residents of Enfield. This would also, we believe, attract new businesses. But this one-mile exclusion zone, if this is passed, it would severely limit the land that's available for these projects. It also means less clean energy for the town and for the county. It also limits property rights, and I think that individual property rights are very important. It then does affect my family's farm, but it affects the 4,000 landowners that could lose this opportunity in the county. I recommend, as the attorney has recommended and following the guidance of the Board, that you adopt those plans to limit that one-mile dead zone. As he stated very eloquently, there are already state policies in place, and I don't think there need to be too explicit on those state policies. The setbacks also waste land that land is not used, and I think that what you're looking at is dead zones that will not be used for farming, they will not be used for anything else, and I'm not exactly sure about the analogy with the drugs. But this only raises the cost for providing real benefits for people. There are better alternatives that exist. Instead of making it harder for solar businesses, I think that we should make it easier for them to invest in Halifax County because it creates opportunities that we have not had access to. I know that some people are worried about how solar farms affect agriculture and the safety of our community, and my mom is one of those, and we've had these conversations with her, but solar development does not threaten farming. It does not threaten farming. Right now, less than 1%, 0.25% of all farmland in the county is used for solar farms. So that's a myth that needs to be destroyed. Farming and solar can coexist. There are lots of studies that show how to coexist, including using that land around solar farms for grazing of different types of animals as well. And then most importantly, solar is safe. All of the technology says that solar farms pose no health risk to the people in those areas. I think that we're at an important crossroads here in Halifax County, and like most counties in the state, we're struggling economically, and I humbly ask the Board to end the moratorium, to reinstate the previous ordinance, and to work with the experts, not out of fear, but to work with the experts on future policies. In closing, I want to emphasize how important this issue is, not for just for my family at Ward's Crossing, but for all of us in Enfield and all of the people in the county. Responsible solar development can bring jobs, can bring jobs, lower energy costs, and strengthen our local economy without harming agriculture or safety at all. Let's not let unnecessary restrictions hold us back from these opportunities. I urge the Board of Commissioners to reject policies like the one-mile solar dead zone and instead embrace solutions that benefit everyone in Halifax County, and we know that we need the economic growth here in this county more than anything, and we don't know what the future holds. These are opportunities that I think that we should embrace and not be afraid of. Thank you again for letting me comment today. Again, I'm Ken Ward. I live at 115 West Burnett Avenue in Enfield, North Carolina. That's 202-297-6134. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Ward. All right. Next person.
Good evening. My name is Tatum Easton, and this is my daughter, Elwone Easton, and this was not a planned night. I just got a text message from a good friend that said, "Tatum, we need to go out and speak tonight because I've had a lot of strong feelings in regards to solar." And it was funny, on the way here, she started Googling, and she actually wanted to Google, what was it, where were the solar panels made? What did you find out?
They're made from China, eighty percent of them.
Yeah. She found out that 80% of these solar panels are made in China. So I own a business locally here in Enfield, Enfield Cotton Generation. Her father and I purchased it in 2019, and he passed away in 2022. She and I are carrying on and we're running the business strong, and we rely solely on all the agricultural land around it. So just across the street, about 350 acres is being put into solar panels, and we're watching it keep developing every day, driving in and out, back and forth to school, and she asked me questions about it, and I'm telling her that her future is going to really, it's going to be different if we continue to have nothing but solar panels because we hadn't figured out how we can gen a solar panel to our plant. In '22, we did a major upgrade to be able to help our farmers in the area and be able to speed up the process. The USDA backed our grant, and there was... The USDA backed our grant, and the main question was, how many jobs were we gonna create? So, I find it funny, when I got on Google today, and I asked, who's funding all these solar projects? It said the United States Department of Agriculture and the Federal Energy Bureau was backing all these solar farms, and so it's kind of hard, it's contradicting itself because they're asking me how many jobs I'm gonna be creating, and I'm wanting to grow, and I've got people that are visiting us, the United States Trade Advisor Senior Advisor came to visit, and she almost missed her flight because she was so intrigued in what we were doing, and she didn't have any clue, because a lot of times, we're so caught up in so much time that we have to be behind the desk, we don't actually get our boots on the ground and see what other people are doing, working hard, day in and day out, to find a way to make a life. And there's just a small little group, Halifax County is the fourth force state, the fourth force county in the state of North Carolina, and we also farm in South Carolina, which is in Allendale County, which is the number-one force county in the state. And it's so sad, because in Allendale County, it's full of solar panels, and there is a place for solar panels, and I'm not against solar panels, but there's a place for them, and it's in places such as on top of flat rooftops. But the issue is, there's so much money and more infrastructure that's gonna have to go in to get that power grid to go wherever, it's too easy. People like to do things the easy way. I'll tell you, standing right here in front of everybody in this room, my life and her life was not easy the day her dad passed away, March first, twenty twenty-two, and I had a choice to either give up and put an auction line up on the ground and get rid of everything and just live off of that, or to push forward. And I know everybody in this room has had a dream in their life to do things good and make a difference, and I'm not, I'm not one that's gonna sit there and try and cry and ask for a handout, and some people like to say that, oh, you're a woman in agriculture. Well, I haven't had the first handout from a woman. I've caught immortal, you know what, from it, and I've been taken advantage of, and in fact, at this moment, I sat down with Halifax CNC, which I pay my utility bills to, I have a farmer that has been going through a lot, and I'm not saying any names, but the man has cotton in the field right now, and he wants me to gin it for him, but guess what? If I turn it on and I stick my neck out for him, I'm gonna be negative, negative, just for turning it on. It cost me twelve grand if I run my motors more than three minutes, okay? So, I asked simply to the Halifax CNC people, all right, y'all want all the solar in the world in Halifax County, can I buy some of the solar? It's not gonna benefit me. I, hey, I'll pay half of the demand charge. I'll be negative three grand instead of negative six grand. I just want to help, but the solar is only falling once to a certain little group, and is targeting the force counties in the states, there's a, and, and you know, everybody wants to win, but somebody's gotta stand up, and they've gotta make a dent to this solar stuff if they're not gonna let everyone in the community benefit from it. And I want to look out for the future, and in thirty years, we're gonna have to take them off, I want somebody to do a little more planning and really pay attention to how it's affecting the future, because I'm doing everything I can. And I'm not doing it off her, I'm living in my life with her now, I own a good life with her now, but for the future, we've got to be prepared, because we can't eat a solar panel and we can't wear it.
Ms. Easton, thank you so much, and Ms. Easton, thank you too.
Thank you.
Appreciate y'all coming. Okay, next person.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Adam Green, my address, four seventy Scottville Drive, Enfield. I'm gonna give you pretty short, but one question I have for you all is, what research have you done as a Board, other than seeing it the criss to do some research or having up this legislative hearing? Have y'all physically done any research in the three months that you've had your moratorium in place? Not just hearing from the solar companies and hearing from the citizens who are against it or for it, but truly done any research? Have a soil scientist tell you what that, if that soil's gonna be any good in thirty years when it's taken up? Check with somebody who deals with water quality to see if it has any of that some water quality. Talk to a wildlife biologist, spitting in these large amounts of land, what negative impacts does it have on wildlife? Oh, they're talking about the buffer rule around its wasteland. Well, when you convert cropped land into nothing but solar panels and plain grass, what biodiversity is that? Where's your bees pollinating from? They're not pollinating on blades of grass that you're just going with a long war, you know, spraying rhino on, it's not coming from that. Also, I wanna know, for one, I'd like to know where there's some sheep or some cattle grazing in a solar field right now in Halifax County, because I haven't seen it. You know, I felt like the planning and Board meeting I attended was kind of a joke in a sense, and it was very disorganized, and I was kind of disheartened by that. There was a lot of combatism, I guess I would say, in the room, but I was wondering, it felt like there was a disconnect with that Board. It seems to me that, that as the Board or the planning Board, they seem to think that the farmers owned all the land in the county, and that's not the case. I work with landowners every day, and farmers don't own all the land in Halifax County. Most of the land in Halifax County is owned by absentee landowners, a good chunk of it. Those absentee landowners, they don't care what's happening with the land, they're taking that check, and they don't care. They don't care what's going on in Halifax County. They don't care whose house the solar panels being put beside, what farmer you're putting out of business. So, that's, that's a negative effect on the county. These farmers rent their land from these landowners that live in Charlotte and who knows where else, and they pay, they pay a high price to rent, but they can't pay eight thousand dollars an acre or five thousand dollars an acre that a solar panel is willing to pay. Next question is, why are they here? Most of these companies are based out west, California and others. Do some research, California's got strict laws on solar, large-scale solar projects. I'm not against it, I'm not for it, I think there's a time and a place, I think there's good places you can put them, but putting on productive farmland is not the place. Like she said, you can't wear it, you can't eat it. What do you think you're gonna be eating or wearing on your back in thirty years when we turn every inch of grain into solar? Economics, what, what benefit does it have? I know they hire workers, I know that they say that they train a certain amount of workers, they're not from here. Most of it is migrant labor. I drive by there every day. I've seen multiple of them put up. They come here, they put the field up, they're gone. Takes very few people to manage them. They change names every year. The one in Scotland Lake, every time I've been out there with the fire department, it's a different name on the sign. You've got to call them up and figure out who owns it now, to get in the gate, to put out the fire that they started in the grass. So, you know, I, I'd like to know where the benefit is of them economically in the county versus the forestry industry and agriculture industry. I'd like to see, I'd like to know what Bender Holtz and Roseburg's opinion is on it, because they're the two biggest taxpayers, I believe, in the county right now, or either, they're pretty high at the top. They employ a vast amount more people than the solar companies do. Once them people come and put them panels up, they're gone. It takes just a few men to cut the grass and maintain the little battery banks, but you've got the largest amount of sawmills in the state, right here in this county. Them sawmills, they're looking for sustainability. Cutting timber and switching it over, that's not, that's not sustainability for them. What do you do with Bender Holtz up in Lees? Would that be a major impact to the county? I would say so. I'd say that's been a very hard hit to the county, when Roseburg up in Lees. I think both of them would be pretty big hard hits. I've done my homework on that. I'm into forestry industry, I've talked to them, I've asked questions, I've researched. That, that's a big impact in the county, those two sawmills. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Okay, next person.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Nick Jimenez with the Southern Environmental Law Center, we're a regional nonprofit. Our office, and our Chapel Hill office, at one thirty-six East Rhodes Mary Street in Chapel Hill, Suite five hundred, home number is nine one nine, nine six seven, fourteen fifty. So, we are a public interest law firm, we are not a solar developer, we're not in the industry. We represent the town of Enfield in an effort to develop clean energy and improve economic opportunities. And I understand the Board of Commissioners has a letter that we prepared on behalf of the town of Enfield, so I wanna, with my colleagues, a couple of whom are here tonight, give you a little bit more context about some of the points in that letter, hope that helps. So, the one I wanna focus on is the one-mile dead zone that Mr. Ward spoke about. Again, we urge you to follow the planning Board's recommendation and not adopt that one-mile dead zone. I wanna just explain, like, why it doesn't work for the town. So, Mr. Ward pointed out that there are landowners nearby, and the town has this vision, we call it Enfield Future, for kind of revitalization. Part of that vision is what we call self-generation. When a town owns its own municipal utilities, like Enfield does, often, small towns like that don't own the generating facilities, they buy electricity from a wholesale supplier that they then provide to their residents. What they could do, what we hope they can do in the future, is to develop their own generating facility, small, relatively small, solar plus storage facility that serves the whole town. And the idea is pretty simple, rather than spreading the cost of that solar plus storage facility over the life of the asset, some twenty-five, thirty years, make sure that that amount of money that you would pay over that time for the electricity that it generates is less than the cost of the electricity that you would have bought from the wholesale supplier. We think that's possible, and we think that will lower those bills. So, I wanna emphasize that those, the bills are a problem in Enfield, this can be news to no one, but I did check with the town finance director before this meeting, just to get a sense of the bills from the most recent cycle, or it's fairly cold. From mid-December to mid-January, they saw bills in the three hundred and fifty, five hundred, seven hundred, eight hundred, and thousand-dollar-plus range. So, getting that cost down with their own solar plus storage could be really significant. Now, it's not the only way to reduce what we call the energy burden portion of your income that you're paying for your energy. Weatherization, sealing up those windows and doors, getting more efficient HVAC, that's all very important, but it's an important opportunity for the town, and it's an important part of the town's vision for its, you know, its future. The one-mile dead zone would prevent, as you probably saw in that letter, if you did get a chance to see it, would prevent building solar within about, within a two-mile radius of about half the land around Enfield. So, we really urge you to not adopt that and allow the town to maintain that important part of its vision for reducing energy bills and building prosperity. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Attorney General Jimenez. All right, next person.
Good evening, Board. I'm Dan Wilson, at the twenty-three eighty-six Moonlight Road, Scotland Lake, North Carolina. So, these guys are talking that they're gonna lower electric costs, all that, I've got a little research that I've done, this is from Forbes. In North Dakota, electricity prices rose forty percent, while electricity from solar and wind grew from twenty, from nine percent to twenty-seven percent. South Dakota, very similar numbers, hold on, go back, there we go. Electricity prices rose thirty-four percent, while electricity from solar and wind grew from five to thirty percent. Kansas, Hawaii, California, all very, very similar numbers. I'm not real sure why that happens. If it's gonna be cheap energy, why is it, why is the cost rising constantly? That's my, one of my concerns. The other one, the one mile, they see dollar signs, they're looking at it, they're going, ooh, dollars, tax credits, green credits, let's get them. Has anybody in Halifax County seen their electric bill come down at all? Has anybody? Okay. I also ask, if I can, how many of these are residents from Halifax County in here? Can I ask that question?
No, sir, we're not getting into that, just go ahead and, okay.
But that's, that's my number one concern, is why are we the ones supporting other counties, other states, other people, and not ourselves? None of this electricity that is being put up right now is going into Halifax County to stay. Yes, it's getting used before it can get out, but West Virginia's buying a lot of it through Dominion, through Duke, not Duke, but through Dominion and other power companies. Why are we supporting other states, other counties, when we need the help here? So, if we're gonna do this, keep it in-house. Make sure that we get the benefit, the end user, not Dominion, not Duke, any of that crap. And I would urge you to think about the economics. They say they're gonna make jobs. Well, if farmers lose jobs, the farmer lost a job, the gins might lose jobs, the tractor companies, Enfield Tractor, Scotland Lake Equipment, quality equipment, those are pretty big players as well. So, I think you got to think about this from all sides. I don't think they're gonna have nearly as many jobs as what agriculture can do for our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson, appreciate it. Next person.
My name is Reginald Bynum, and I am Community Education Director for Strategic Communication, also President of the NWA CP for Halifax County. I just wanted to, just kinda touch a few things, since I am an industry professional.
Uh, Mr. Bynum, give me your address, too.
Uh, yes, one three nine two East Old Spring Road, Nashville, but also, obviously, I'm from Halifax, Born and Raised right up the street.
Okay.
I just thought with the steps of permitting, I just wanted to speak to it. Steps and permitting, there are environmental tests, as a lot of us already know on this Board, that companies have to do, looking at wildlife, endangered species, those things are taken into account and not just thrown together when a farm is done. Obviously, that, that is not how the state would allow these farms to actually happen. I'll just stop there with that. Farmers doing well, I, I think there's a misconception, some of my constituents, of what's being said here tonight, what's actually happening, I think, on two different sides of the coin. There are some farmers that are paying local underserved residents sixty dollars per acre to currently lease their land currently. That is barely enough to pay taxes. So, when someone has the right to lease their land for much more than to gain money and possibly generate a wealth over a thirty-year period, that shouldn't be questioned. There's a slippery slope when you start talking about landowners' rights and what people can do with their land, because someone feels that they don't like the way it looks or they have personal opinions about it. The fact of the matter is, is that there are people, maybe there's room, that are renting this land for dirt cheap from these citizens, and, and there is a fear that solar can pay more, and they will lose that option to do so. And that's from our constituents. There's one particular project that's coming to Halifax County, and that, that I've worked with to develop, that's bringing eleven and a half million dollars in tax revenue over a thirty-plus-year period to the county. And that's typically how these deals work. I can't, I can't discard what the need is for the county and being tier one, and we already know that, and our population decrease year over year, and, and, and hoping for things to get better, that is not gonna improve our population and the outlook for our kids, in which we are currently seeing, because I work with schools directly, I don't know about anybody else in here, but schools are merging together due to a dying population. So, we're looking at jobs for our kids, and schools are merging, Pembroke Elementary School, the school that I went to, I just recently inducted their SGA students not too long ago, they have to merge with another school, because the population is declining. So, growth isn't gonna come from these, these projects that were mentioned, growth, growth comes from real economic development, eleven million dollars from tax projects. To, to the point of panels being made in China, yes, yes, they were, they're also, if you do research, there are also tariffs that were put in place in order to stop it from happening. For instance, Greenville has Ovi Solar, which is a company, which is a three-hundred-million-dollar investment in Greenville, and they're producing panels locally in Greenville, North Carolina. It's a Vietnamese company, yes, similar to every cellphone that everyone probably has in here, but yet, these, these panels will be made in Greenville, North Carolina, creating jobs, and again, three hundred and fourteen million dollars exactly in tax revenue for Greenville, North Carolina. New electricity, out of new electricity form in the past quarter, fifty-five percent of it came from solar, fact. Local jobs, the Centralization literally had a job interview for a hundred people in which twenty-five recently hired for a project in Scotland Lake, and there are another twenty-five that are actually gonna be employed, maybe on average twenty to twenty-five dollars an hour, which is currently eight dollars more per hour than the working generation of eighteen to twenty-four years-old in county, fact. Energy demand is increasing. Energy demand is increasing year over year, month over month, especially with the addition of AI, which, you know what is mentioned, the new technology that is coming out here that we use every single day for the management of business to, for the do social media, to be more effective at our jobs. AI creates a huge power demand, and renewable energy plays a major part in fixing that, not coal, not gas, and again, it is the highest form of electricity currently created. That's wild, again. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Mr. Bynum, thank you so much. Okay, next person?
Good evening, Board. Thank you for your, your time and your service at the county. My name's Graham Whitehead. I do not live in Halifax County. I was born here, raised here. I currently live at 7009 North Fair Road in Wilmington, North Carolina. I'm here representing both sides of my family. We own property from Airly to Scotland Lake, and both, both sides of my family have explored options considering solar. They are, you know, life can throw us curveballs that we obviously come, and sometimes you have to make decisions what's right for your family to generate income needed for survival and generational wealth, whatever you want to call it, but, um, so I'll just, I had, I had a much longer spiel here, but I'll just cut it real short because a lot of the points that I was going, I was going to make, I've already been made, but, um, we are opposed to the one-mile radius requirement. I see that as being a death knell to the solar industry from the county in whole. And one thing that I've not heard discussed is that, it's my understanding, that Halifax County basically has three major transmission lines running through the county, one through the Airly community, one that runs kind of from the center of the state, and then one coming in through Scotland Lake. Capacity is already an issue, so it's not like everybody that owns property along these transmission lines will be able to put up a solar farm. There, I think, I think a lot of the airing capacity already, and I feel that as landowners, we should have the right to make a decision what's best for our families, and that just because there's one existing farm a mile away, I don't think that should be an impact on someone that, should they decide to put up a solar farm on their property. So the reality of Halifax County being covered in solar panels border-to-border is unrealistic. Yes, by the nature of the industry, they will be in close proximity to one another because they have to be near these transmission lines. But, uh, you know, I just think that with Halifax County having over 3,000 tax parcels that are in the land use program, that the landowners should decide that they want to make a voluntary decision to come out of the land use program, increase tax revenue for the county, that that should be considered perhaps on a case-by-case basis rather than just putting a blanket policy out there that affects everyone. So I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Whitehead. Next person?
Good evening. My name is Hannah Klaus. I am with the Southern Environmental Law Center, also representing the town of Endfield. I work at 136 East Rosemary Street, Chapel Hill 27714, and my number is, my number is 919-592-5447. I will be speaking to the health and the safety of solar projects. Endfield residents want to live in an economically prosperous community that is powered by safe, reliable, and clean energy. Halifax County should remove unnecessary restrictions to solar energy systems because solar technology is reliable and safe. Studies have consistently shown that the health and safety risks of solar technology are negligible, and the benefits of this technology far outweigh the risks. The overwhelming majority of panels installed in North Carolina are silicon panels. These panels are known to be high-quality, durable, and have predictable performance. Solar panels improve grid reliability because they are built to withstand storms and hurricanes. Most recently, for example, during Hurricane Helene, in the town of Hot Springs, North Carolina, the downtown was able to maintain power while a distribution line was being repaired because they have a solar microgrid in that community. Solar energy makes Halifax County a safer and healthier community by reducing the need for fossil fuel infrastructure. Halifax County residents deal with a threat to their air quality and water quality from the coal ash landfill in Littleton and the gas transmission pipeline that runs through the county. With solar energy, the county can meet future energy needs while reducing the risk to the health, safety, and livability of this community. While solar projects are long-lasting, eventually they reach the end of their usable life. My colleague Zach will share about the growing and thriving recycling industry for solar panels in which they can be put, their useful components can be recycled for a high value. When recycling is not an option, studies have shown that it is safe and there is no risk of putting solar panels into landfills. Solar projects like those envisioned by the Endfield Future, the plan for revitalization and reducing the energy burn in the endfield, can have a significant benefit by reducing energy costs, improving energy reliability, and creating opportunities for workforce development. I recommend before adopting its solar energy system ordinance, this board consult with experts to determine what decision can best further its goals regarding solar energy. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. House. All right, next person?
Good evening. My name is Zach Griffith. I'm a UNC law student, but I also work at the Southern Environmental Law Center with my colleagues. The address is 136 East Rosemary Street in Chapel Hill, North Carolina. So I wanted to use my time to talk a little bit about what happens to solar projects like the Los Complacés Endfield when they reach the end of their useful life. First, it's important to note that solar developments have a long lifespan, typically more than 30 years, and after 30 years are up, the solar developers have several options. First, they can choose to apply for permit renewables and repower the facility by upgrading the solar panels, and they actually are financially incentivized to do so because they can make use of existing interconnections. And by upgrading solar farms to the most up-to-date technology, developers can actually improve the efficiency and financial returns of the facility, leaving the community with a better solar farm after the repowering. Alternatively, the developer could decommission the facility. Decommissioning means that the developer removes the panels and restores the sites. Landowners can work with developers to agree upon the condition the land is returned to, including potential upgrades to accommodate new uses in the future. Today, as Hannah was mentioning, there are more opportunities than ever to recycle materials from solar farms. The panels are made up of mostly recyclable materials such as aluminum and glass, and as the first generation of solar developments are starting to age out, there's been a massive expansion in the solar recycling industry. For example, First Solar, which is a large solar developer, is even a take-back program where they actually purchase and refurbish the solar panels. And as recycling technology continues to improve, the value of the recycled solar panels is projected to increase, and so much so that frequently decommissioning costs are increasingly forecasted as a negative for new projects, and that's simply because the value of the recycled panels is actually higher than the cost to remove them. My last point was going to be about the North Carolina General Assembly and the detailed laws they passed on decommissioning requirements for solar facilities, but as Attorney Rollins has already gone over that, I'll just simply ask that, that the commission adopt the version that simply references the North Carolina General Assembly laws on solar decommissioning to avoid duplication. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Griffin. These mics are sure working tonight, aren't they?
There's no time limit on those mics. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, thank you for holding this hearing safe, and we feel like it's very important. My name is Will Callaway, and I do not live here. I am from Charlottesville, Virginia, which is the East Coast office for Baywatch Renewable Energy, and we are a solar developer. Also, I want to mention, I enjoy these meetings because my mother was county commissioner of Bradley County for 16 years, and so I started doing these when I was a youngster. There are plenty of them that I sat through that I didn't enjoy, but I'll try to be able to break them through. We do support the adoption of this ordinance and the cessation of the moratorium that's been in place officially or unofficially. We feel like it's a good chance for the county to look at the future. I've got some common sense regulations. Like you've heard from many others tonight, we do not approve of the one-mile limit restriction. We feel like that does get into a question of property decisions that should be left to the property owners as they move forward. As a solar developer, a lot of things are said about us and to us that I'll simply say I disagree with. First and foremost, we do make a commitment to the community, and it's for a 30-plus-year period. Now, the jobs we talk about are primarily during the construction phase, which is generally a 16- to 20-month period, and that will be hundreds of jobs in the community. I am not going to sit here and try to tell you that we're going to give you 30 years' worth of jobs. That's not how solar facilities operate. They are monitored 24 hours a day, every single day, and most of that is remote, but we will have people in the community that we retain so that anything that happens at a solar facility will be responded to immediately. The 30-year number is important because for 30 years, as you've heard tonight, the tax base on this specific acreage will increase because of the new commercial usage, and you will be guaranteed an increased tax base in the millions of dollars during the lifetime of that. Also, a special use permit that you're trying to spoken about, all permits may carry conditions. And if there are things that you hear this evening and a permit application comes from Baywatch Renewable Energies or another company, you may put conditions in that permit that are very specific to construction, road bonding, which we do commonly. We have adopted a policy on every parcel that we can of bringing in sheep for vegetation management. Two things, you do not need to mow, you don't need to bring in mechanical equipment, and for the, for the farming community here, which I respect greatly, I worked on agricultural entities, excuse me, issues for almost a dozen years. When you let ground go fallow and you take crops out of rotation, you plant native grasses and you use sheep for management, and I will say this in any FFA group, any Farm Bureau at all, you improve soil conditions because nitrogen fixation, phosphorus replenishment, et cetera, is allowed to happen. So we are, we are trying to work with the farm community. I've spent a lot of time up in Reno, Virginia, with Farm Bureau there, and I would be happy to do it here as we move forward. So there are jobs, there is protection of the land that is leased for a 30-year period and then return to agricultural production or whatever the landowner prefers at that time. And also, in addition to the sheep, we have started putting pollinator species all around the buffer areas. Why is that? Because we all know that pollinators, especially bees, have been on the decline in the United States. Baywatch was founded as an agric, excuse me, agricultural company more than 20, uh, 100 years ago, 120 years ago. They have a commitment, and we try to do it locally. Now, can I guarantee you that we're going to increase the pollinator species population in Halifax County? I cannot, but we're going to try to improve it because pollinators are informed to agriculture. We realize that, and we want to increase them as much as we possibly can. Finally, let me get back to something that Mr. Bynum spoke about earlier. We are trying to fund training for local workers in the community through the Center for Energy Education. We have a commitment to them to continue doing that on future projects as we have in the past. Again, another fundamental incentive that we try to provide to the county. And finally, let me touch on one safety issue. Tomorrow, I'll be meeting with Roland Tellier, who is the fire marshal here. Why are we meeting with him now? Because we know the concerns, we know the fears that have been raised in some instances. We go meet with fire marshals, fire departments, whether they be dedicated or volunteer, and make a commitment to them to help with training and any assistance they need during the process, as well as just the education of what is a solar facility, what are the concerns we need to be aware of. I hope I've given you some idea of the perspective of the developer, our commitment to the county, and what we would like to do as we move forward with a new permitted project. And I also want to offer myself as a resource, and Baywatch Renewables as a resource for any questions you all have as we go forward. And again, thank you very much for your public service. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Callaway. All right, next person?
Hi, I'm Robin Summers, 56, 56 Pro House, I live in Dawson County, and I do thank you for taking the time to be with us tonight, for bringing the ordinance this up, I sincerely appreciate that. I do believe I attended the planning meetings, that more needs to be done. I personally don't believe the planning, the planning committee did what you asked them to do. I don't believe in the conservation measures and other measures to protect us as citizens. We're not here about making money. That's not why we're here. We're here to save our communities, and it is not these towns that are feeling the impact. Endfield is going to put that solar in my backyard. I will get no benefit from it, and that's the plan. Halifax County is the little communities that make it all, and these solar companies are putting bull's eyes on these communities. I was joked, I heard a joke, oh, you live in the solar district. Dawson was called the solar district. We should not allow these large projects to sprawl so much that we have no sense of community. I would like to also address the one-mile rule. That, I believe, is a very good step towards helping us as citizens. It was wonderful. I was so excited to hear it because Dawson could still be Dawson, not solar panel after solar panel after solar panel. Also, it's great. It's a biodiversity conservation measure. They asked during the planning meeting, what was it for? And no one can answer. We have coyotes, which won't work with sheep, that are in the wrong places now. We put our dogs up at night because with the fence is already going up, they don't have the corridors they used to go through. They're going new ways. They're in another my backyard in the neighborhood. It's changed. Deer are hitting the side of the roads in places they never were because they're funneled. That one mile will help animal migration. We have hunting groups that come to our area for hunting. It's a big business in Scotland Lake. They need that open corridor. We don't want to box them, we don't want to lose these communities. Furthermore, I don't know about the power system, but I know it doesn't stay on all the time. At night, when these panels are using power, so, you know, I've seen them put the big, the big power lines, there's that infrastructure grid under the ground. They're pulling our power. What happens saying, you know, we get that big storm coming? They're pulling power, are, are we not going to have power? Are we going to get cold? Is our infrastructure ready to expand? And so what I would like to ask you to please just spend the moratorium, work towards helping us out more as citizens if you're willing. We have great, great, we appreciate it, especially the farmers in my community. You want to do a shortcut, wait for North Hampton, they just want to do theirs, and then we can start with that, but that would definitely work. But whatever happens, I think we need the one mile, and so I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Alice. Okay, anyone else?
Good evening, Commissioner.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank y'all for your time. Thank you for, I bet you didn't realize when you, you're on that ballot, you signed up to this meeting. Thank you for hearing the voice of the community on both sides. My name is Rob Fleming. I reside at 5043 River Road in Scotland Lake, North Carolina, 27874. My number is 252-578-7760. Again, thank y'all for coming, and we've heard a lot of tonight. I think you've got a lot of decisions to make, as you very well know. I just want to throw a few curves at you, just food for thought before you make your decisions based on what you're It goes for sunlight, so do the solar panels. You know, in the world of agriculture, we would think is a solar panel is a weed, so to speak, so they're committed by nature. Well, just ask you to just think about that. We've heard a lot tonight about research, a lot of, I think we have a lot more to do. What is it going to look like for Halifax County? I think we need to put forth, and I think there is a whole lot of research that's being committed now. North Carolina State University is one tool that we as Halifax County residents can use. Let's tap into some of their research. Let's look at water quality, soil quality, wildlife, all those different things. Let's take a hard look at that. One more thing I'll say to you guys, just one word, Solyndra. Take a look at it. I encourage y'all write that down. Solyndra. Take a look at, as a former plant was put up, lost back to its land, unfortunately. I believe that solar has a place. I do believe that solar has a place in our lives today. I think that Halifax County would benefit themselves to do the research and see how we can all live collectively. The last thing I would suggest, Mr. Rob, don't throw anything in there. I would ask, here's a possible ordinance language that maybe y'all, you guys could look at. It seems to be, it would fit best under the new paragraph under section forty-six dash fifty-three. An applicant to construct an SES must provide written report that addresses and offers strategies to mitigate the loss of agricultural land, forest land, and those jobs that go with that, if any, surrounding that SES. So, that is a good tool, Rob, ladies and gentlemen, that we can use. Thank y'all for having me. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Mr. Fleming. Okay, anyone else?
Good evening, y'all. Thank y'all for allowing us to come up and speak on this. My name is Brandon Hale. I live at 3411 H Street, Littleton Avenue, right in the heart of Arlington. I am also the fire chief of Arlington Fire Department, and I work full-time for Town of Hill, and I am also a farmer who is carrying on a family generational farm, a candidate on. Something I just wanted to ask is, with the solar, is when is enough enough? Right now, we have five thousand seven hundred ninety-four acres covered by solar panels with another ten thousand three hundred and twenty acres in solar projects being constructed at this time in Halifax County. That is twelve percent of Halifax County's farm land. And that's just right here off the, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but as I've been hearing conversations back and forth, I was just sitting right here giving them the solar right here. Another thing that I have come across giving is properties that are adjacent to solar panels are declining in value. So, for, there's a solar farm surrounding my house or down the road to my house, my property value falls. There's proof of that here. Another thing, with all this solar panels currently producing power, why haven't our utilities gone down? Why have they actually gone up tremendously? Because I nearly had a pit when I made my light bill last month. Another thing here is the current solar panels in our area produce eight hundred and forty-three megawatts electricity. That's enough to power four hundred thousand homes. Now, I do not, and I have not had the time to research how many homes we have in Halifax County, but when is enough enough? Why do we need to keep building solar to ship out to other cities? I actually heard the other day that there's a solar farm here in Halifax County that is going to Boston, Massachusetts, going to power to Boston through the transmission lines. Why are we not using that power here at home to help our people? I heard a colleague speak earlier about Scotlandex has already first solar farms in Scotlandex, and they have yet to see their utility deals declined. I know Enfield has talked about a project to revitalize the town. My question is, if you surround a town in solar panels, how do you plan on bringing in businesses? How can you build sawmills, factories, when you're surrounded by solar panels? I get the idea of going utilities. I'm a hard forty. Mentioned about landowners' rights. I'm a landowner, I'm a farmer. I don't want somebody telling me what to do with my land, but when is enough enough? And I believe that is all I have. Thank y'all for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Hale. Okay, anyone else?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Susanna Martin. I live at six hundred Sherre Heights in Enfield, and I am going to speak about where my daughter lives and where I spend most of my day, taking care of my grandchildren, which is at eleven hundred Neville Farm Road. And I just wanted to share with you what it's like living next to a solar farm being From six AM till it's dark, there are trucks over the speed limit coming down the road all the time, and I'm not exaggerating. Can't let the dogs out, can't let the grandkids out because the trucks just speed because it's a small road off of Beaver Dam, the two-nothing area. We called, had contact with whatever company was working, and they said, oh, you will probably tell the guys. It doesn't happen. In addition, I don't know if you know this here, there's no supervision on any, of anything that's really going along within, in terms of the trucks or any of the noise or any, or anything. They're just, they're seven days a week, Sunday, six o'clock in the morning. So, there's no, there's no provision for quality of life if you're living right next to where they're building this solar farm. And I would just like to see some kind of wording in an ordinance that takes into consideration the actual residents who live within a construction site, basically. And that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Martin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Commissioner Angela Harper from Enfield. I did not come to speak for...
What's your address, Ms. Harper?
Two nineteen H Street in Enfield.
Okay.
Cell phone number two five two five five seven seven four seven seven. My family is a farmer, been all my life, and I'm here at twenty-sixty-four years old. As of now, my family is still a farm in the country on James W. and in a farm road. I don't see anywhere where it is affecting our farm. Farmers just stop farming, farming land. All farm, all land, people don't farm on that end of it. So, to say these soybeans is affecting all the land, the deers that you see, the foxes and stuff you see, you see them for why? Because they are starting to now all these woods, and they don't help anywhere too good. That's why, so. For Enfield, I want to speak, yes, we do want to see a soy, with the soy, you have to have the grit for the soy to, in order for your electric to come down. I can say about my life deal, I liked dealing with four hundred and fifty dollars last month, never happened there. So, yes, you have a process to go through, but you have to give it a chance to go through to see if it works. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Harper.
Good evening, Chairman Branda Brad and other board members. My name is Commissioner Bobby Whitaker from the town of Enfield, two fifteen Liberty Street is my address. My phone number is two five two nine eight five eight zero nine four. And I've heard a lot of things tonight except for what about our elders? If you make Enfield, they have to juggle. Get your medicine, pay the rent, pay the life deal. And with the solar coming in, that will help us, and I ask you all to please consider the one-mile radius. I think one-mile radius is just too close. I think we should extend it, the two-hour should extend it, and I heard, I heard someone say something about the deers and all of that. Deers run out without the solar right now. They're running out. I stayed in Sydney, this coyote being in my yard. That's not concerning about the solar panel. That's not the reason they're running. They're running because the trees are not in Enfield. That's the reason. And I just thank y'all for y'all time tonight. Thank y'all.
Commissioner Whitaker, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for being here. Thank you for hearing us. My name is Jane Braddy, four 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 two Cahookey Church Road, Scotlandex. I really don't have any comments. I have questions, and hopefully maybe the gentleman right here could help. There's been a lot of talk tonight about electric, energy prices. Nobody has seen any results as of yet, and I'm kind of coming to this in the eleventh hour. I've not done as much research as I should, but I was hoping maybe someone could take the time to explain to us exactly how these farms are going to help us here directly. We've heard comments about how it's been shipped to Massachusetts. We've heard, you know, comments about how it's going other places, but can someone here tonight, anybody in this room, just take a little bit of time and explain to us how solar farms here in our backyards are going to help us directly? What is the path? What is the route? What is the procedures? Is there anybody that can give a little bit more clarification? Anyone?
No, no, you're not going to respond. No, sir. Absolutely not. Continue talking, ma'am.
No, that's what I'm...
Now, when we're taking a break or something, you can talk, but you're not, we're not going back and forth.
No, I'm asking, can someone...
Well, he's raised his hand. When we take a break, you can talk with him, but you're not, but we're not going back and forth now. It's your time to talk five minutes, and we'll hear from you.
Well, as again, you know, I'm asking the question.
Right.
Have you, you as the commissioners, do you know the answers to that? Can y'all explain it to us? Can anyone?
Are you finished?
Yeah, I'm asking...
We're not going to respond. We're just listening.
Okay, all right. Well, that's what I want to know.
Okay. We're taking what you say and advisement, we're taking what you say and advisement, but at the break, we're going to take a break in a few minutes, and then you can talk with either one of those gentlemen you want to talk to or anyone else. But we're not going...
There's a lot of people in the room that would like to hear that answer.
Well, you know, the purpose of this hearing is, we can't go back and forth. You know, I can't have this person raising his hand, that person, this is not the purpose of this. The purpose of this is for the public to come to us and to express their concerns, you know, in reference to what we're talking about. It's not a question-and-answer dialogue.
Okay, all right.
I just want to make that real clear. It's no disrespect to you at all, you know, that goes for everybody in this room.
Okay. Well, that was my question. Also, I will say, I think the majority of the land that is being turned into solar farms is not owned by citizens of our area. It is owned by people that live in Raleigh and Charlotte and other places, and they're not having to live, like this lady said, right beside it. So, I would like to ask you, when you're making your ordinance, if you're going to pass this and you're going to go forward with more, please consider the people, the few of us that actually live here and will be living right beside these solar farms. My understanding is that some of the vegetation, you know, there's a lot more that could be added to these ordinances that could help, you know, if y'all do decide to move forward with it. So, I would ask that y'all look into increasing the types of vegetation and the way it's put in so that we do have a stronger buffer for the few of us that will actually have to live, you know, with these farms right out our front door.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate that, Ms. Brayden. All right, anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else coming, commissioners, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Seals. Is there a second? Who said that? Okay, second by Commissioner Randon and further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. We're going to be at ease for about, pretty close to ten minutes. It's about eleven to twelve after seven on that clock. Just pay attention to that clock. That's what we're going, go by whether it's right or not. Let's be back at seven twenty.
Go by whether it's right or not. Let's be back at 7:20. Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started, Matt. I'll tell you what, one good thing, this mic is sure working. All right, at this time, we're going to move to action on the legislative hearing. And we're going to hear from Chris Roundtree, who's our planning director, maybe Attorney Rollins as well. Mr. Roundtree.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, yes, we're having a legislative here. Do you consider changes or?
Mr. Roundtree, let Attorney Rollins inject something.
I apologize, Chris.
Sorry about that.
I told the chairman I would do this for the public so they would know, and the folks who sent these letters know, but the board had received prior written comments from Ecoplexus, Environmental, Southern Environmental Law Center, and also from NRGNC One LLC. All three interested in making written comments and had the authority to do that because with respect, not with respect to the Law Center, because they're helping the town of Infield, and we're speaking on behalf of the town of Infield, but Ecoplexus and NRGNC all have projects pending and have lease interest pending, so they had the ability to submit written comments that had to be done at least two days before this meeting. The board had those over the weekend in their agenda packets, and I just wanted the public to be aware, we had those written comments in addition to the things we've heard from others tonight. I apologize for cutting over you, Chris, I just wanted them to be aware of that.
No problem.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's all right. So, we're here to consider any of the changes or amendments that were proposed by the planning board, or any amendments that your board feels needs to be amended as well. I believe Attorney Rollins has, there are a couple of ordinance written up.
You want to hand that off to me now? Is that what you want?
Okay, all right. So, thank you, Chris. Board, you've heard a lot from folks tonight, and I appreciate everyone who's come out tonight to give their comments, and I appreciate the board's patience. What I've done, I opened this meeting when we were earlier, starting about a recommendation staff has about rescinding our local decommissioning rules, and I'll speak that one more time. It seems to me not a good use of our limited staff, and in that case being actually Mr. Roundtree, he's the staff in the planning department. All my time, in the last couple of years, when we had this, we've had this ordinance since 2019, I believe, Chris, is that right?
Yeah.
And we've been navigating our own decommissioning rules and dealing with that, and it's been fine, but we have an opportunity to not have to bother with that and let the state statutes and regulations come in, and I can appreciate the legislature doing that. I appreciate DEQ with all the rulemaking they've been doing over the last several months, their rules are ready, and I think they're going to be implemented on March 1st. So, what I've prepared for you during the break is, as you know, an amendment to an ordinance has to be adopted by ordinance, so I put at your place is two versions of an ordinance to amend certain provisions of our solar energy system ordinance. One, for convenience, I've written the letter A at the top, and the other says letter B, just so you'll know, as part of guiding your discussions. The one that's labeled letter A already has deleted from it the phrase that was not favored by the planning board concerning the one mile, the one mile limitation or one mile dead zone, and I've heard others refer to. The ordinance, adopting ordinance labeled B incorporates all of the changes that were initially proposed, and both of these ordinance, ordinances would rescind the decommissioning rules that I went over with you earlier tonight. I just have those there for your discussion purposes. You may have other questions about other parts or other things that were recommended and have been discussed tonight, but this is for you now, so you have something to help guide your conversations. I will mention one other thing about, you know, as I talked about, moratorium and that sort of thing. If you were here in 2019, we did a moratorium then, when we adopted our brand-new ordinance. We didn't have a solar energy system ordinance in 2019. We imposed a moratorium then to get that in place, and as soon as that ordinance was adopted, the moratorium was terminated. Likewise, you imposed a moratorium back in October, when you wanted us to look at certain amendments, and you specified that that moratorium would end tomorrow, if not sooner, but it will definitely end tonight if you adopt an ordinance. By either of these drafts, the moratorium will be terminated, and for that matter, it's going to end tomorrow anyway. It is not easy to impose a moratorium. I don't think you have the authority or the ability to extend the current moratorium, because I don't think things are that egregious or that severe that you've got to do, that you've got to impose a moratorium. I think it's fine, as long as you wanted to look at amendments, but I would not, if anyone's thinking about extending it, I don't think you have the basis, legal basis for doing that. So, that much, I'll leave that alone and just let that kind of float out there. Otherwise, if you've got questions about the proposed changes, or questions about decommissioning, and why we'd like to get out of that business, or questions about the one-mile dead zone, or anything else, the proposed changes to buffer or setbacks, now's your opportunity to discuss that among yourselves, or ask questions of me, which I will more than likely defer to Chris, but in any event, if you've got questions, I'd be glad to try to respond.
Okay, I got one question, Commissioners, starting off. The state under decommissioning item, or alphabet A would contain, and B too, I guess, would contain the new statute and regulations under the state, right?
Yes, sir. The drafts I put before you are both would rescind our local decommissioning rules and require that all solar energy systems in the county comply with the state statutes and state rules.
Okay. All right, questions or comments from any Commissioners about the information that's been presented tonight? Been a long night, so seven thirty will put us right at two hours. Okay, that's okay, though, as long as it takes. We're here for as long as it takes. Question, comment, Commissioner Barrett, your hand is up, or you got your hand on your head?
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I mean, hearing everybody and looking through news, you know, we realized these decisions going to affect a lot of people. You know, and I'm weighing two different things. I'm weighing on one side, you know, I think telling a person what they can and can't do with their own property is, I don't know, seems like one of the most un-American things we can do. On the other hand, you know, I live in Ronald Rapids, I'm familiar with people, Dick and Free, who are pretty much the most urban place there is, and how it affects them. But I love driving down there, through Moonlight Road and Kirkland Bridge Road, and, you know, you go out there in September, and there's got to be a little snow down there. That's one of the best towns around the place in the earth. And I get it, I, yeah, part of me has tried, part of me has tried to see how these solar projects help Halifax County in the larger areas. You know, individual landowners, a few individual landowners get a little more money out of rent. I look hard to that, and I get that. I have a problem trying to tell those people they can't, and that's getting the most money they can get for it. But I think our land is a resource. I think our farmland is a resource. And I think, you know, my concern would, I want to help that town in field 100%, but I think you may have some options there, as far as like finding a piece of land and maybe annexing it into the city, and, you know, so you can have your, your city ordinances dictate what goes there instead of the county ordinances. I think you've got some options there, other than us blanking the whole county with some. Yeah, you know, it's a tough call, but I'll be honest, I think I'm going to support a one-mile deal.
Okay. All right, and other Commissioners, I'm going to make comments. You know, just before we do a motion, let's talk about it, unless you all don't want to talk about it. Commissioner Way up, I'm sorry.
I was at the planning board meeting.
You're member of the planning board?
Yes. Therefore, a long, long, long time.
Yes.
And one thing I can say from the planning board, that they were unanimous that we do not, do not impose that one-mile raise. Now, all of us agreed on that.
Mm-hmm.
However, I did agree also that B1 regarding the 150 feet setback those lines, I supported that, and I also supported B2. So, taking that consideration, the proposed ordinance, which is A, is the one that I was supporting.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Silver, you're having a silver suit tonight.
Yeah. Wrestling with some tough, the people, as few as you know, District One is my district. District people, one, are very supportive of not having the one-mile, but I try to work and listen to the whole county, and taking consideration. The overwhelming consensus from another district, which is not mine, has been, they wanted the one-mile, so, and so that's where, I believe this gentleman spoke earlier, spoke about that, some who live here, some don't, what they call absentee owners, and stuff, so it's tough wrestling with that decision, because, again, I think one of the toughest things we do as Americans in our own small tract of land.
Absolutely.
Is having someone tell you what you can and cannot do with it, and I know several people in District One, actually, it's probably has been one of the things to help save some of their family farmland, being able to rent it out, but at the same time, be encroaching where our food is going to come from, but, and support A right here this morning.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Radner?
I'm a little bit torn as well, because as a farm owner in Tullary, North Carolina, I also see the value of all the points that were made regarding the importance of farmland, and that all, that goes all the way back to my grandfather, Welling Percy, to get John get tractor, so I could learn to farm with him. But also, on the opposite end of the spectrum, I see the value of the Infield Future Project and its striving to replace the outdated, dated electrical grid, reduce electric bills, reduce the energy burden as far as the electric bills, and also have students, as I've said before, who have worked or interned or attended summer camps with the Center for Energy Education, and all that they have learned and acquired in terms of knowledge and experience as they endeavor to pursue careers in engineering and clean energy. So, I see without, so as I'm deliberating now, I'll take those two points of view into consideration.
Okay. All right, well, I guess it's on me now. You know, I just, I really think that, I'll put my glass up so I can see. You know, as I look through this, you know, the solar array of proposed Level Two and Three SES facilities should not be located near the one-mile from the solar array, and another Level Two, you know, I know that the planning board, you know, did not recommend that, and certainly, you know, I would concur with that, and I think both of them are good, and it's a, it's pretty hard, but I would also be inclined to go with A. And based on that, y'all, I'm going to make a motion that we follow the recommendation of the planning board, which is rescinding the decommission, and we follow the state, which is Plan A.
So, move second.
Okay.
May I clarify from the top?
Yes, sir.
To everybody who knows what we're talking about, A and V is not very helpful, and that's my fault.
Okay, that's okay.
So, so the ordinance labeled A would be an ordinance to adopt amendments that would be consistent with the recommendations of the planning board.
Right.
To delete the proposed amendment about a one-mile dead zone. But it also incorporates the recommendation tonight from staff to rescind our local decommissioning rules in favor of the state rules and the state statutes. So, we're clear about that. Otherwise, all the other changes that were proposed and went through the planning board still are incorporated into the same proposed ordinance to amend that's labeled A at your desk.
Madam Clerk, I was trying to make a motion, but I think one of these gentlemen to my right made the motion too. Do you know which one it was? Which one of you made the motion?
Commissioner Webb seconded after you.
I changed the second.
Okay.
Yeah, he changed his close second.
Okay, all right, so I made the motion.
Yes.
Motion made by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Way up. Any further discussion? Attorney Rollins?
I'm just going to read for you that the motion then is to adopt an ordinance to amend certain provisions of Chapter 46, Article Three of the Halifax County Code of Ordinances entitled Solar Energy Systems that will delete the one-mile dead zone proposed and also rescind the local county, local decommissioning ordinances.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. That's what the motion is, that's what the second is, right?
Yes.
Commissioner Way up?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? Now's the time. If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, who was that? Okay, Madam Clerk, let the record so reflect that that motion passed, that you vote, okay, motion passed four to one. Commissioner Barrett voted against it. Okay, it passed. So, we'll move from there. Thank you all so much. Appreciate it, Mr. Roundtree, all your help with that. We're going to move to other business. Okay, also, Attorney Rollins has already talked about the moratorium, so we know that's automatically.
It's over.
It's over.
Yep.
Okay. All right, on the other business. Ms. Benton, I guess we still don't know about pathways for Wednesday, right?
No, sir. For those of you that are planning to attend our Wednesday session with our students, we will know tomorrow from the pathways group, based on what the schools decide to do for Wednesday.
Okay.
So, we will let you know as soon as we know.
Okay. Okay, anything else on the other business? Did you all have any other business, Attorney Rollins or Ms. Scott, county manager, y'all have anything else on the other business?
No, sir.
Commissioners?
No.
Okay, anything Commissioners on the other business?
No, sir.
All right, anything to go to the closed session?
No.
Okay, all right, I'm going to show you all the trick. Can I get a motion to adjourn to March 10th? I believe the meeting is at 9:30, all right? Okay, motion made by Commissioner Barrett, that's seconded, seconded by Commissioner Silver. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, meeting is official.